6:30, so I'll call the meeting to order. Do you have additions or deletions on them?
What?
Addition and subtraction inside.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have any additions or deletions standing?
No.
Approval of the select board minutes of 6:5 and 6:19.
Can I just take a peek at your top pages of 6:19? It didn't print out in my printer. My printer decided to not print it. So, I got all the rest of it, just that first page of 6:19. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to accept both of them as written.
Second.
Discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pay orders. So, we have pay orders of $58,316.34. Questions, discussions? Looks like I had one.
What was your question?
I don't know what it was. Oh, I was just gonna comment. I thought it was strange that the game board had charged us to do that program down at the summer rec.
Yeah.
I guess it is what it is. They pretty much have used up their budget for field trips at this point, too.
Yes. I think their plan was they were only gonna do the one field trip, the field trip defense.
So, I'm gonna do the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve 58,316.34.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Road Commissioner report.
That's gotta be a doozy.
I need to find those.
You've got five minutes, dude.
I think everybody knows basically what happened during the storm. We got slammed up in the lawn for a little bit. Put it back together. Dealt with State of Vermont today on estimates. Got those in. There's gonna be a lot more road building back, you know, cleaning up, finishing up, dressing up. They worked on Dawson Hill, I think it was, today, and Homestone. And they gotta do a little more on Sugar Hill. Finish up a couple more small rocks tomorrow if it doesn't rain too much. And then, there's a matter of trying to get Parker Road straightened out and a couple other little things to do. Other than that, things were almost normal. You know, I don't know. They gotta do a little work. I don't know what's going on at the town garage or trying to dry that out. I don't know if they're gonna have to have somebody come in and estimate that or not.
Well, I talked extensively to Steve today. I mean, you were here. You didn't seem to think much about it.
I don't think we had much issue other than some mud. I just, I don't know how you check the insulation in the walls. Maybe they got our foam over there for a small bit from the last storm. It's just little things. I know there was no, as far as I know, no electrical problems like that or anything. We might have to look into it. I don't think the furnace was an issue.
He said the water didn't. I asked him about the furnace. He said it didn't come out.
Anything like that.
Sorry, I said, I think it was about four inches before we had the pump.
I think we're gonna, other than, you know, dirt cleaning up and little things, I think we're gonna be all set down there.
The only, something to think about in the back of your mind is the drain in the uptown bays. You know, where the back door is right there, straight in, there's a hole in the floor.
Yeah.
If at some point in time, that, I don't know what's over that. I think it's just a hole there, but...
Where the drains used to be, 'cause there's no excess, no drains going to deal in there.
Well, what I, where I was going with it is the, the pump that we use to get the water wouldn't get down in there.
All need to make it big.
So, we had to stand on it to hold it down to pump it out. So, I don't know if that's, at some point, pot, just...
Yeah, just maybe make a hole, put a pail in there.
Yes.
Cover it or something. So, just set the pump down in the pail and have it plated over.
Yeah.
You know, there's no external drains in the building.
Right. No, just think it's something that we can drop that sock, that hose down in and dig.
Let it pump in.
Make it an actual slump.
Exactly.
Make it an actual slump.
Yeah, some hole, yeah. Enclose it, so that's all it is.
Is it worth me calling somebody to have them inspect the garage? Like, one of those water damage people?
I think we have to go through it first.
Okay.
And then, you know, just...
I think down the road, we probably should, though.
You're gonna have to do something if the insulation is wet, you know, however far it hit in that wall.
Okay, 'cause VLCT emailed me last week and they want a list of damages sometime this week.
Now, speaking about a list of damages, I'd just like to restate that anyone who had property damage from the storm, they really need to report it to 2-1-1. They might be able to get help with private property storm damage from the, from the state federal government, but they gotta report it to 2-1-1.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying that as a public service announcement.
That's about all I got on the flood issue.
Are you, you gonna do anything to the, to the blacktop on the corner down there where River and Creek?
Make sure where that hole was. We just...
No, back by the trees, 'cause I noticed that...
The cedar trees. Yeah. We filled that in with dirt for it.
Oh, you did, okay. All right.
Yeah, that's all filled in.
I noticed that concrete...
Started cleaning the ditch up along the side of the...
Notice that blacktop took an awful beating.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna have, part of that, well, that was part of the section we're gonna have repaid, but we have an open bid yet.
Well, we got them tonight.
Other question that I've had thrown at me from four or five different people, are we gonna do any roadside mowing? Like 140, Creek Road, Turkey?
As in defer ton away from getting the roads back together?
Well, yeah, it's something we sub out anyways.
Okay.
It's something, you know, we talked about when we bought the rubbery machine net. It does some, but it doesn't do it all. So, that's up to the town whether they wanna do what they wanna do.
I don't think we have anybody available, contract, other than...
Yeah, I don't owe anybody else.
You mean the guy, the guy that we used to use in Manchester retired?
Yeah, he sold out. He died.
Yeah.
You know, do a couple days' work just to get the, the majority of the tire roads that need to be done and a few of the side streets.
To do North End Drive, too?
Yes. Yeah, that's one of the complaints.
Okay.
North End, 140, Creek Road, and Turkey. You know, it's just...
Oh, yeah. What about Dale Davenport? What, he lives on, is it?
Dale?
Eric.
Eric's wife.
On, uh, they live on East Street there's...
Yeah, he's more worried about the brush. And that's something we're not gonna get to this summer, I'm sure. Now, we're, we're just booked right out.
Not even with our new mulcher?
That machine's gonna be digging all summer.
That can be done in the fall or whatever.
Fall and all winter, they can do that stuff. And it's a perfect time, 'cause we usually have an odd person idle in the shop, and they can do it.
What is Phil Baker and Sons hourly for roadside mowing?
I don't remember. I think it's a hundred or less. It's in the paperwork we did this spring.
Oh.
It should be in that contract. I think that was part of the contract, so...
Yep. He is on the, he is in that contract that you have in front of you.
I just wanna say, I was out on the tour today of the roads, and I just wanna say how impressed I was by the work that's been done by the road crew in such a short amount of time.
It's a good job, very good job.
Very impressive.
$120 an hour for roadside mowing?
What was that?
$120.
So, we probably oughta have a motion to...
To do the...
To hire?
To hire for the roadside mowing? So, I make a motion to hire for the roadside mowing of the streets in question?
Phil Baker and Sons?
I'll second.
Phil Baker and Sons, yes.
I'll second. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
We will need a, an estimate from you guys about the amount of material we lost in the force. Sand, gravel, salt.
Oh, okay.
Steve said we lost a lot, at least six or seven loads of tri, triax loads of salt.
Salt?
Yep.
I didn't know it got in the shed.
Yep.
The shed only holds three.
He said it holds four, and then there was two under the sand shed. He said six. He told me six this afternoon.
I'll have to come down and look at that.
So, six, six loads of that plus sand and gravel.
I know he had some in the sand shed.
Yep.
I know he don't have.
Did you bring all our culverts home?
He got all the culverts back. Yep.
We got them all back?
Yep. Yep. That and the tank.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did we find the tank?
Yeah, it was sitting on the bridge.
Yeah.
Sat right on the middle of the bridge, if you remember.
That was our tank? That was our tank?
Yeah. So, right now, we do or do not wanna see how somebody come in and look at water damage for the town garage?
We do.
Yeah, especially if we have to get it to team or VLCT that we wanna make sure that's...
My thought is have maybe the town guys pull a few sections off the wall, so we're not paying somebody ridiculous money. Just have them open it up a little bit, so they can actually see before we get somebody there. That's what I was saying.
Okay, do it soon, 'cause VLCT is gonna wanna know.
They should be able to, 'cause tomorrow, if it's pouring rain, they can spend a few minutes in there and do that.
And I don't, I mean, if, I was talking with Steve today about anything else. I don't think anything else, I don't think there was any water damage at the playground or the ball field, even though the water was up by a minute.
So, there was no damage to the...
Ball field, the hard ball field was stripped. There's nothing left in it.
Okay.
They pulled all the infield out.
As in like the one past, past like at the end of the road?
Way out.
Yes.
At the very end where the ball pump is. And the one, it stripped a bunch out of the very first infield. And I think, didn't we just put all the chips back underneath the swing sets? That's all gone.
That's all gone.
Every bit of that's gone.
How's the basketball court?
I didn't get out and look at that.
That, what they're looking for is our, the actual items listed on our insurance policy. Looking at the playground, the dugouts, the fences, they're, you know, the structure, those things.
Okay, the playground is stripped. Oh, you're looking at the structures in the playground or the...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean...
I know there's not, there's no mark bulge left at all. It's gone. The chips are all gone. And I, I'll look around, I could be down tomorrow and look around, see if there's any...
These, that's the list of all of our things listed on our charts. We need to find out if there's any damage to all those things.
There's structural damage to equipment.
I will look at that tomorrow.
Okay.
Especially, especially 'cause he saw that, like, the, at least I saw pictures of, of the playground being like, all that water that was underneath, like, may, maybe trying to think about productively, like, do we have enough money in next year's budget or something like that to actually fill in more and then put mulch on top? Because it is just a basic pool that collects all that water.
Right. I don't, yeah, I don't know that they'll cover like, the things like wood chips and stuff or the materials on the ball field.
I would think it's gonna be a little bit to put that infield back together, 'cause it's all right in between the parking area and the infield and a lot in a nice smooth puddle. I'll look around, look at that stuff and see.
Okay.
I'll check more than what else we've got. Paving bids were the one thing. I don't think there's a whole lot left.
Well, I hired Phil, by the way, the day after the storm, to, to help us with all the emergency repairs and stuff, so maybe, maybe we should actually make a motion that we hired him, or...
Yep, and then you have in front of you some of the other estimates compared to Phil. You have Phil's contract in there, so you can see what Phil charges for stuff compared to those two other contractors I gave you. Like, Phil's, Phil's price for the larger excavator is... Well, the mini is 80.
The larger was 165.
165?
Yeah.
You can see what...
So, he gave us good deal.
Yeah.
I know I'm...
And then, the rates that the, the other two contractors charge. One, one may have been a little bit lower, but then it was a $500 fee to move it, so... It's in an email, Kathy.
I'll make the motion, sign this agreement, and keep Phil on. Build such time as a road to back to 100%.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I think we're up to paving bids.
Say who needs a fancy?
Letter right there.
Oh, yes.
There we go.
You sure you're safe with that?
I got a jag knife, but I wasn't gonna bring it out. This is from Pike Industries, Michael Mullen. So, paving, you're, the price is $120 a ton. They estimate 705 tons for a price at $84,600. It's got another $7,200 for 60 tons of shoulder gravel at $120 a ton. And note, Creek Road Bridge, $325 per unit price. 32 tons for $10,400.
Christine, I'll just put them in here, so we have them all, just in front of us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you tell me which roads he included in his estimate?
Doesn't he enlist roads?
No.
It just says the only, specifically he had an extra line for Creek Road Bridge.
That was it.
How do I know?
Did you bring them out?
He's gonna pay.
Did you bring, you brought them out to the roads?
'Cause we started with Seward Hill, or, around the, well, Seward Hill, and then we went to Maple Street. And I said, you know, that's the order I want them done in. Maybe that's all of them. I guess I'd have to call them. But I thought he was gonna break them down road by road.
The section, we, the bid requested prices for Seward Hill and Sugar Hill.
Yeah.
A portion of Waldo Lane near the transfer station, a section of Maple Street, and then the second, separate price for Creek Road Bridge.
I thought he'd break them down. But must be he did them all, then. I don't know how the others bid, I haven't...
Wilkes has got an identical bid sheet, different numbers inside of it, but for paving, Wilkes has $134 a ton. They estimate 660 tons for $88,440. Shoulder gravel, they've got $45 a ton. And they estimate 100 tons for $4,500. For, for a total price of $92,940. And they've got a little asterisk down here, bridge grant operation, plus or minus 35 tons at $200 a ton for $7,000. He's got no separate mobilization. Whatever that means, Phil.
Yeah.
They'd have to come in separately?
Yeah, that was, I told him it was a total sucker bid. I presume if they were paving Maple Street, they'd just pave that. But now with the storm damage, we've actually added to the bridge bar, 40 feet.
Yeah, we can't pave the bridge until we get a contract from the state, which we don't have yet.
Yeah.
We may not have that till August or so.
This may be a while before they can even do anything.
Right.
Because of Mother Nature now, so...
Then Fuller.
That's what I thought.
Cut it in half already?
I'm slicing, slicing the bid down, too.
I tell you, it'll be the cheap one.
Yeah.
Cut it in half already.
So, this is Fuller Sand and Gravel.
In pieces.
Insurance certificate, too.
Oh, this, this is the insurance certificate that I sliced up. Okay, the bid sheet. Again, his price is, for paving, is $197.50 a ton. He estimates 626 tons.
Did you say 197 and a half?
Wow.
$120,635.
I think he's got a decimal in the wrong place. I think, I think he put a one in there by mistake.
Yeah, I think so, too.
But...
Wow.
But he did the math. They did the math and added up the...
Yeah, they did the math. It's 123,635.
He's never...
And it doesn't look like it's a mistake, though, because the Creek Road, the, not the Creek, oh, the Creek Road bid, he put 197.50 again.
He's never been that much higher than that.
No.
30 tons.
I can tell you there's something wrong there. I think he made a mistake. I think that there's not supposed to be one there, but I, I don't, I can't, you know, he wrote it, I didn't.
He put the math down. He's got a grand total of $129,560.
She might have misheard it or something.
What does he have for the bridge?
He's got 30 tons at 197.50 again.
$6,000.
Same price for both.
But we're, yeah. Weirdly, that brings in below everybody else's estimate for Creek Road.
Yeah, I, I think that's... I don't know what you do in a situation like that.
They're all the way over our budget.
Yes.
Yeah, well, there's, that one there is just 40, I think is wrong. But the other two have included, they're supposed to separate out the road segments, so I say we had enough money to do Waldo and Sewers and then stop. Not put all three of them into one lump sum. They didn't break it out for me. So, say Waldo and Sewers take 550 ton. We're gonna be in our budget, get done what we wanted. Well, Maple Street's not gonna get done. That was the extra.
None of them broke out the road segments. None of them.
I don't understand that. I consistently ask them to give me a tonnage price and to separate the tons on each section.
Well...
Wanna table this and go back to them? Ask them to give you a breakdown?
Yeah.
What is our budget, what is our paving budget?
$70,000.
Yeah, so...
And then we have a separate grant for the bridge.
Plus an extra 40 feet on the bridge?
$17,000 for the bridge.
That's what we had in there. What are these estimates coming in as for the bridge?
10, 7, and 59.25 for the bridge.
Do we have to match the bridge?
It's a 10% match.
Yeah, but we got, the grant was what?
$17,000.
$17,000 is literally $17,000. High. I, I honestly think I need, ask to have this table and to have it rechecked.
That's good.
Yeah.
I don't...
We can do that.
Do we need to make a motion to table it?
Or just by consensus?
By consensus, go.
Everybody agrees, right?
Yeah.
All right.
That it, Phil?
I'm all set.
Marvel mentions. I wanna thank Barbara Kaminsky for donating funds for the Wallingford Day Fire Rescue League, which will be happening in a very big... And all of the community thrift for donating funds to the summer rec program. Mark Tessier for assisting the road crew in moving vehicles.
They had to move before I got here.
Citizens of the county for helping their neighbors in the flood.
And Bruce Duchesne for assisting with photo documentation of the road damage.
And we also wanna thank the Wallingford road crew for their outstanding work in getting everything back in shipshape. And also all the local first responders.
Yes.
For aiding citizens impacted by this storm, so... Quick comments. Quarterly financials.
Do you always have one final payday order?
Oh, thank you.
After your look at the preliminary, year end?
And direct passes down?
Please.
Here you go. Take one and pass them there?
So, the year end, right now, preliminary, we ended up at 92, with a net income of $92,928.7. That's what's on the profit and loss. And I've given you a pay order for June 30th. These are the final, three of the final ones. The first, the first item is for records restoration. I have to, anything I may take in over what was budgeted, I get $4 for every recording, so that has to go into a fund, so that's just an automatic thing. The next, expenses to the town of Mount Holly for their plowing and grading. We just got their belt, so... And then, there's the third one for Ferguson for the culverts. And that, so, if you compare the preliminary general fund ballots to the net income on the profit and loss, it's off $15, 'cause they, that's their service charge for the month, but it hasn't been taken out yet. So, if we pay these three checks, we'll have a year-end profit of $79,421.47. However, I need to ask you what you wanna do with the water project. That's by Sumio's here. I have not issued any checks, because the work hasn't been done. And I wanna get the year-end done.
Okay.
So, that the next, hopefully at the next meeting, I can come to you with a tax rate, and then we have to build stuff next month.
So...
Yeah, it's planned for the day of the...
Okay. So, when can they come up? So when can they come out to?
Kevin Ruins says he's available.
Okay.
Where we wipe that.
Okay.
I don't.
Bill's not though, right?
I don't know about Bill Losson.
Bill Losson isn't though.
Bill Losson isn't?
Available right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure they're all pretty busy.
Oh, busy business.
Yeah.
What was the bid from Kevin?
About six hundred.
It was six hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. And Bill was?
Oh, five hundred.
What do we think?
I'd like to make a suggestion that we table this until next spring. If you think about it, in probably ten weeks from now, we're going to have to close things up, take the year out. He said we were only going to use it for big events.
Right.
There's nothing scheduled at this point.
Well, the fireworks haven't happened yet and the DJ hasn't happened yet. And I think there's still. Well, if we're having it during, it is a big event. I mean, I would think that we would. And also what about football in the fall? Flag football in the fall.
Yeah, we can just, yeah, to me, if there's a window of opportunity to get it done, then why not get it done sooner than later? I mean.
And Kevin's.
Julie needs to close the books and determine what the tax rate's going to be.
That is what we're hearing.
Well, Kevin said, Kevin said that he could do it anytime. He's a lower bid.
That's all just digging a hole. That's not putting.
But that's not the problem. The lawyers are not available.
Oh.
Yeah. So you gotta get the two in order.
Yeah, it has to happen at the same time.
Okay. So what does the board think?
I mean, we originally talked about the town, but that's not going to happen for a while.
Well, if it's a, you know, four hour project, that's one thing. You know, I still think the town can do it. But I think, like Bruce says, we need to line everything up. So it's going to work, so we're not dying up a whole day.
And you, you're just only doing the digging part for your own benefit.
Do they have somebody to do that?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So I guess, do we know though whether or not, if he's going to have any, like, you know, he's going to be pretty strapped for a while?
Yeah, we, we had one other bid, Bill Jones.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we could, his was only slightly higher than Bill Losson. So we could potentially ask him, but yeah, I just don't know when that might, but maybe in, even if it's a couple of months from now, that still, we can still do it, you know?
So if we do close out the books, the money goes into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, and then since we've approved the project, how do they go about getting it done once the books are closed out? Can they use that general fund money?
It'll come out of their budget for next year.
Or can there be a way maybe of going ahead, cutting checks for Kevin and Bill at six hundred twelve hundred? And then we do it whenever we can coordinate the two together.
Can we do that?
That's, yeah, I was kind of wrong last time when we knew there'd be a delay.
Yeah.
Right.
As a potential. And that, I mean, that's.
Cut the checks and then know that the work is going to be done in a future day.
Yeah, if you want to add it to the, the June thirtieth, I can cut them, it'll come out of the expenses and we'll just hang on to them.
We've done something similar for Wallingford Day. The fireworks and the DJ have already been paid for and it's going to happen at a future time.
Yeah, and after things settle, you know, maybe, should be a couple of months, but.
Then the town can do it, possibly, you know, limiting.
Well, yeah, but we're going to have that check, but you know.
Why?
That doesn't mean we have to give.
Doesn't mean that we have to use the check. Just because the check is cut doesn't mean we have to use it.
But if we have it, then, and there's an opportunity for Kevin and Bill to do it, then we have it.
Didn't that come out of this year's budget, not last year's budget?
Yeah, the twenty-two, twenty-three rent budget.
So technically last year.
Yes.
This one.
Yep.
Well, I remember putting that money on for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Am I mistaken?
That's mistaken.
Yes.
Okay, but I thought we talked about it at the last, during the budget.
No, because we want, they want to get it done.
Yes.
June thirtieth.
The money you're using to do this was actually budgeted for salaries.
Yeah, it was just fortuitous that there was a surplus, yeah.
Yeah, there was surplus, yeah.
I, I think it makes sense, we've sort of got the checks as long as Julie can feel fine with that, just having that.
Do we need a motion?
We have to add it to the order.
Okay. So yes, we need.
Add these to the pay order like you normally do.
Gotcha.
And then it puts the final in the order.
So let me, so do we need a motion to add these to the current pay order? That's basically what we're saying, Julie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the thirteen forty for eighty-eight forty?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm still on the fact of having the town do it and save a little bit of money. Because it's going to happen later anyways and things are quiet now, but that's, I mean, it's up to the, the board, it's always. Six hundred dollars is six hundred dollars.
I'm fine with either way.
I mean, you know, if you're talking, Bill's going to be tied up for a month before he's available to come down and do it, then the road crew more than likely will have, be quiet enough where they can get down there with a machine and do the work. So, you know, if we're looking at, if you want it done tomorrow, the road crew's not going to get to it. If Bill's tied up for a month, I'm thinking the road crew can get to it in a month.
And there also might be a little more flexibility with the road crew then versus a private party that we have to, we don't know their schedules. And we could squeeze it in, so like Bill might say like, oh, I have, I have a few hours.
That's fine with me.
I mean, the road crew's flexible enough if Bill calls up, says, I can be there tomorrow, Bill.
Yeah.
But.
He should be able to go in there anytime.
Right.
Back goes back in Kevin's house, so.
Probably is it back there?
So that's basically to the twelve hundred then, just for Bill?
Can we pay for the security cameras stuff?
It's already on the pay order, they just moved.
So fourteen six eighty-eight forty, is that right?
Yep, it is. It just added twelve hundred.
So do we motion to approve the pay orders as of June thirtieth?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay orders as of June thirtieth with the addition of the twelve hundred dollars for Bill, check for Bill Losson for the final total of fourteen thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty cents.
I'm doing that one, Caroline.
Yes, Caroline.
I don't get your buzzers.
Anything else Julie, we need to cover in the quarterly financials?
No, I'll bring the finals to the next meeting with tax rate.
Transfer station fees. We had a request from individual modern weather. They were going to reduce fees for flood damaged items brought to the transfer station.
So Julie contacted Wallingford Drift today and they may be donating funds to several of the families for that purpose.
Okay. And I've also heard that some people had extra punch cards and was looking to donate those to those who would need.
And that's happened too.
The only way I could see this going through is like somebody getting a, like a notice from, because it'd be so hard to say, oh, this is, this is flood damage, this is just wet, like it's just been left out in the rain kind of thing. It'd be very hard to figure that out, but like if the, when the town hall said, lead or flood damage items is how many I think it's going to cost, then I feel like that might be as long as it'd be okay for you folks that are going to actually be processing that. That's the only way I could see it working.
Are they going to donate directly to the individuals?
Yes, they're going to send checks.
Okay.
Yeah.
To use as they want.
I have to say historically, we never did this one, right?
I don't think anybody else.
And also, okay.
Like I said, if they call 211 and report damage, they can get, you know, possibly some of the money back anyways, but they gotta keep track of everything that they spend.
Those people who suffered flood damage need to contact 211. They will get help. They need to contact.
We got, and this is Nelson, our emergency management director, only four.
Only four people.
Only four people have contacted 211 so far.
Including Starbuck?
I don't. Not sure that they've contacted them yet.
River Street and Creek Road people, that was it.
Because I know she had a lot of.
Yes.
Lot, lot, lot of damage.
Contact 211.
So conservation commission appointment. Conservation commission has requested that we appoint Denise Eddie to the vacant seat for a four-year term. Denise has been attending meetings. Is that what their term is, four years?
Yeah.
They're brave. Any discussion?
No, unless anybody has any insight as to why, that would be approved.
My consensus? My consensus, she's appointed. You have a quote for town hall fire escape lights, they're in bad shape. Is it staying on this one? Because it's my son.
And what money do we use to pay this? Would this be for the building fund, building fund? And Julie, how much is in the building fund this month?
Like eighteen, oh, how much is in the actual, is that?
Yeah.
I can tell you the next meeting, we'll get almost twenty thousand a year for it from the health power. So Jeff discovered this when he was here putting in the security cameras, so. I didn't get other quotes because I didn't ask for it, so I'm just finding, you know, he submitted it. I don't want other quotes or.
Let's see.
I mean, I don't know if we've spent anything since the end of December.
Do we need another quote because the price is between nine and two thousand? Yeah. It meets the moderate cost items, which be written quotes two, three, one. What do people think?
Our policy is over a thousand, we have to give several quotes. Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred to, oh, so this is actually a small item.
Yeah, I was going to say it's under fourteen.
Yeah, so it's a small item, so the most reasonable price possible. This doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
I make a motion to approve it.
I second it.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to see.
Heating oil.
More sealed bids.
All your hand mess.
Feels like we're doing a secret game or something. Like, they don't like that's in the end there.
It's winter, isn't it?
You're telling.
So I think Champlain sent us two.
We do? Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, I have two here.
Yeah.
Is one for the library, are they the ones that?
They, it just gets same, they're gonna sell.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Oh.
This is actually a document that they inspected our oil tanks and they're approved now.
Except this is one tank very old, but doesn't specify.
But you still have some more in the works there.
It's going to be.
This is where I went now?
Or he did come in to look at it.
This is from Champlain?
This is Champlain Fuels. Provide heating oil to Wallingford Town Hall. Town garage on River Street and the Gilbert Hart Library. They have a pre-buy option price of two seventy-five plus two cents state excise tax. And budget or payment within thirty days of delivery for two dollars and eighty cents plus the two cents tax.
How much is the thirty days, two what?
Two dollars and eighty cents. I think that's it.
Are there any bids from Getcha?
I have to say.
I had a third.
I said there was a bid, Getcha said.
Getcha, for the town of Wallingford, fixed price prepaid is two ninety-two a gallon for a total of thirteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Option two, six budget payments based on a fixed price of two ninety-two a gallon for two thousand one hundred and nine a month for six months. Or a fixed price pay within thirty days of delivery for two ninety-two a gallon. And Gilbert Hart Library is the same, two ninety-two on everything.
So is the lower bid Champlain?
Yes.
Champlain with their, the budget, right?
It's the same.
Or the pre-bid, the pre-buy.
The pre-buy is five cents cheaper.
Oh, okay.
We don't. We normally do thirty days.
Okay. It's two eighty.
So they're ten cents a gallon cheaper than Getcha.
Yep.
So do you need a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion to accept the bid from Champlain Valley Fuels?
I'll say.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Fitzgerald Associates has asked for a contract extension of one to two months for their erosion induction design project at Elton Lake.
I did hear back from Watersheds and they said no issue whatsoever. They actually sent me an email shortly after this saying many projects were impacted by floods, so they expect people to extend. This isn't even due to October twenty twenty-four, so one or two months time.
So will you do spike?
Up to sixty days or something?
Yeah.
Extend it up to sixty days and then they're probably, they're not thinking to end the contract and come and, you know, see what happens for Steve.
Or reserve a tandem or something at least.
Their original deadline is.
At the end of August.
August, isn't it?
Yeah. So maybe we'll see if any.
Yeah, that's going to be a drop dead.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Select Board comments or concerns?
I guess Mike, just because this is the first time we've had a major event while I've been tending on this, is like, one is our responsibility, just so I don't, as I know, like, in this situation, should we be contacting you, Sandy, to see what we can do? Or is it just coming by what we can and else? You know, it's all different situations in terms of work and everything else. So I just, I wanted to make sure if there's anything that, that we had to do versus what we should be doing, or what would be ideal in this situation, when we have these major events.
Well, I mean, um, our emergency management director, Jim Bagnell, which probably should have also been in the honorable mentions, has been doing an outstanding job, and he actually had National Guard here today, and, uh, to see where they can help. You know, it's just, it's kind of just being Wallingford citizens at this point. If there were, you know, at some point when FEMA comes in, there might be special meetings of the Select Board will attend, and, uh, there's no need to be voting on anything.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a shirking duty, but...
The biggest problem is you can't have more than two...
Right.
...members in the same place at the same time, so, you know, if, if there's three of us here, we gotta, somebody's gotta go, so...
Okay.
We do have extra shovels on.
Lots of dirt down by the rescue squad to pick up, right?
I'm trying to...
Dirt every person pick up.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted a little clarification on it, because I didn't wanna feel like I was shirking.
I mean, Sandy's got, right now, Sandy and Bill have got the, the blunt of the, the work, so Sandy needs help with paperwork, that's, you know, she could reach out.
Yeah, and Jim, Jim Bagnell also sent us some information that we can, FEMA will cover the hiring of temporary employees if we need them, so if that comes to pass, I don't know if we do or not, but...
We're in really good shape.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm very what they look for, it sounds like, you guys.
Unless something happens to a truck, I finish my part as a project by Friday. I'm not, I don't want to do paperwork stuff today.
You made a, um, really, really good job.
Yeah, really good.
Um, so...
Sandy, did you get away? Did you do your trip or not?
She flew out.
Yeah, Sandy, Sandy should be mentioned in the honorable mentions here too. She's, she came in, she's put in a lot of extra time, hours, and...
And sacrificing.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy.
But she really did have a very good night, and fly out, I gotta admit, that was a rough night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure that Saks helps, it'll be there next year.
So, other business, um, the Discovery Book bin is, is at the transfer station.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Correct.
So we'll be able to take hardcover books at no cost, and we'll keep the books out of the history.
And it's just hardcover.
Well, I'm clarifying, I'm clarifying with Tom, um, they may also take some soft covers, some CDs and DVDs too, so, yeah, not VHS. I had a call for that the other day. There's a lot of VHS out there, but, so it might be even more than hardcover.
I imagine the soft cover can still get shredded by the paper shredders, for the most part.
And other things, Wallingford Day went up. Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to reschedule the fireworks and the DJ.
It was, it was a ton of fun, I was able to do the parade with my kids.
Oh, good.
And that was a hell of a good time. And then I, we were able to hang out for a little bit, and it was really cool to be able to have the concerts on the Wallingford block, and be able to sit across the street at the library, just on the block. That was really a very, very convivial kind of atmosphere.
And there was also, there were indoor concerts happening as well, so that if the heat was too much for you, if you wanna see a good concert, you could go to the clock room.
Yeah.
And, and see a concert in there.
And then you're, uh...
And then the conjondance was, went very well. Simu's band was great, and it was really well-attended. It was really nice to use that upstairs of the town hall, what, the perfect floor for conjondance, make it, can I just say that? And the air conditioning, way out of this world. I could have asked for better conditions, so... And Benjamin Musada really enjoyed the Pikeview concert.
It was really wonderful, especially after the storm, having everybody come through in. We were swamped in town, that was amazing how many people were around. Betsy says that they were just completely inundated with people at Sweet Bird, so...
Two of the food trucks backed up, but I think the one that stayed made a killing.
That burger was good.
I heard, yes.
It was a really good burger.
Which one did it stay?
The town line, the one that was...
Oh, yes, I saw that.
Yes. They were very smart with the way they did their, they had three options you could choose from, that were varied, which were nice, and I think they just, they were busy all day long.
Yeah.
Well, and the free lemonade was wonderful. Whoever put together the free lemonade that was there was outstanding.
Credit to the Rotary for the free ice cream and hot dogs, too.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
I think we used to have three things of ice cream. And a bite of hot, or a bite of, you know, dogs.
So I think it was very successful.
Yeah.
Maria French posted in, on Facebook and Front Porch on a long list of thank yous, but, of course, she didn't include her own name, but Maria did an outstanding job.
Yes, Maria needs to be noted, she takes on a lot when she does this, and she does a fantastic job with it, so thank you, Maria.
Someone had done a thank you on Front Porch tonight.
Okay.
I forget who it was, but it was a thank you from...
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, good.
Um, and other things, the accessories office had four agreements in here, but, uh, there were no agreements appealed to the BCA, that John. In that package here, we have a memo for the state education tax. The homestead rate is a dollar sixty-two point four eight, which is up to sixteen cents. And the non-homestead is a dollar sixty-five six, that's up eleven cents. So... I think we covered it, I think.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
One second. Is this in favor?
Aye.